All right. We're going to start off our meeting with a proclamation and an important one. Russell, if you could please read this proclamation, I appreciate it.
Certainly, Mayor, this is a proclamation recognizing Child Abuse Prevention Month. So whereas in federal fiscal year 2018, 4.3 million reports were made to Child Protective Services, and whereas child abuse neglect is a serious problem, affecting every segment of our community and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas our children are our most valuable resources and we will shape the future of the town of Southwest Ranches, and whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse, and whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children, and whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families, and whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families, now therefore, the mayor and town council will hereby proclaim April 2021 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the town of Southwest Ranches, and we urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. Fine, see you, Mayor.
Thank you, Russell.
You're welcome, Mayor.
Appreciate that. You know, the, I think this is, this is something, when I think back on why we moved here, it was all about our kids and providing them a place, the right place for them to grow and develop and be so, become their, you know, who they, who they, you know, who they became. So this is really something that's important, something we all need to, you know, recognize how critical is our kids are our future for certain. And so it's, it's great to be able to proclaim this and to ensure for our town. Okay. Public comment.
Okay, Mayor, we have a couple of speakers I know from the SEEK Youth Association that would like to just present to the town about the virtual 5K, the Third Annual 5K, and that's going to be done virtually this year. So we have on the call have Neet and Parnit, and so I'm going to call on them first.
Fantastic.
Okay, so here's Neet and Parnit is here as well. Okay, and we have a, we have a item that they would like me to share, which is basically the flyer. So if you'll indulge me, let me just pull up the flyer and give them an opportunity to speak. One second here. Here we go. Okay, Neet and Parnit. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I am Neet Cor.
I am Parnit Singh, and on behalf of the SEEK Youth Association, we thank you for your time.
As you may know, the SEEK Youth Association is planning a virtual 5K walk and race for the town of Southwest Ranches from April 24th to May 9. We appreciate every amount of support you've given us thus far and hope you will continue to supply the support for more events to come. Despite the unfortunate situation we are in, we want to ensure that the community is making the most out of this year in the safest way possible, while also raising money for the town scholarship fund.
We are looking forward to this event to raise money and help those in college or going to college, because as we know, the past year has been very difficult for all of us. This can be done by scanning the QR code on the flyer to register or donating to the cause. Normally, we would have a designated location for everyone to gather at, but this year, we had to make it as safe as possible and let people do it wherever they please within a two-week time period. We hope that this year will be, will be as successful like the past two years have been and are looking forward to working with the town to help raise money for the Southwest Ranches College Scholarship Fund.
In previous years, this event has been extremely successful, unifying the community in the best way possible, while also raising over $10,000 so that numerous students have an opportunity to further their education. Family members, kids, and friends from different walks of life took part in this event Saturday morning, and smiles were seen by everyone.
Not only were 600 people having the time of their life, eating cultural food, and hanging by different booths, but it also strengthened the youth groups present there to have a chance at meeting new people, networking, and impacting their community.
Thank you for giving us this time to share this with you all, and we look forward to updating everyone within the coming days. And I hope you can join us in the race from April 24th to May 9.
Awesome. Thank you both for taking the time to help pull this together and to announce it here. It's just been amazing, the partnership that we've had with the Seek Society through these, through this, these events and many other events, by the way. So appreciate that in a challenging year that you all are continuing to, to move this forward and looking forward to seeing everybody enjoy it and be a part of it again this year. So thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I got a quick question on that. How do you scan that barcode? Is there a website you can go to to scan it?
Councilmember, you can use your smartphone basically to scan the QR code if you have a QR code reader on your smartphone, or we also have provided a link that's clickable on the social media posts on the town's social media channels, Facebook and Twitter, where you can click on the runs, the, click on the link and it'll take you to the run signup page so people can register that way.
Is there anything on the website itself that can take us there?
Yes, the website, the website also has the clickable link that will take you to the run signup page as well, Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Any other public comment?
We just got one, look, two. I'm sorry, John Bavaro.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is John Bavaro. My wife, family, and I reside at 17500 Southwest 54th Street in Southwest Ranches. We are taxpayers for the past 28 years.
Hey, John, John, I apologize for interrupting you. I think I know what you're going to be speaking on, and that is an item that's going to come up later on in the, on the agenda. I think it's item number 15. And so if I could just please ask you to speak at that time when we're talking about that item, would that be all right?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
We've got a couple more, Mayor. Jennifer, Russell, you're muted. Jennifer Dactin would be up next.
I didn't realize I was muted. Yes, Jennifer Dactin would be the next speaker. Ms. Dactin, can you hear us?
Can you hear me? I can hear you guys.
Yes, we can.
Um, I also wanted to talk about something that is on the agenda later on. Would I talk now or later?
Please wait.
Okay, so I'll just wait.
Excellent.
Okay, the next speaker, Mayor, is James Starkweather. Mr. Starkweather?
Hey, can somebody just tell me where I can print the agenda? Because I can't find it on the website.
It's, if you go to the department pages, go to the town clerk's office, there's a link for agendas there and a clickable link for the March 11th meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Starkweather. Oh, good night. Uh, let's see, I think that's it, Mayor. I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, board reports. Do we have any board reports tonight?
Uh, yes, we have Christina Brownlow with her hand raised, Mayor.
Very good.
Ms. Brownlow?
Hi, everyone. Yes, am I coming through better?
Yes, you are.
Yes, you are.
All right, thank you. If you'll indulge me for a moment, I just wanted to say hello to John Bavaro. I teach, and John used to come and do CPR at our school, so I've known him a long time, so it was really nice to hear his voice. But back to protocol. I have the honor of chairing the parks this year, and we had our meeting this week, and a few of the things that we have discussed. We established our budget priorities for the parks and our staff liaison, December Laurentano, will be forwarding them to council for review. So we have our fingers crossed for prioritization for amenities and certain parks. Which a wonderful gentleman, and I do hope I get his name correct, Rich Demoliere of Lemon Lime, has been providing the free mulch and the, he has mulched areas in the town, and it's my understanding we'll make a proclamation for him. I think it's wonderful because it develops relationships, you know, between towns as he works outside of the ranches. We have had residents discuss amenities they'd like to see happen at parks, and one of the easiest solves that we have is a trail at Roke though, where the barn is. And we discussed simply putting a gate at the southwest corner, which would just allow pedestrians, horses, bicyclists, and they would be able to come into the length of the park, and it should be at a minimal cost. We're very excited that that was an easy solve and it could make people happy. A thanks to board member Wendy Halberg, she was at Equestria Park and noticed something and brought it to December's attention, so doing her due diligence, and we were able to fix a minor construction problem. And finally, our board has been tasked with assisting with us maintaining our National Wildlife Federation sort of habitat certification and with helping to promote the survey that has been put out and getting our residents to complete it. So thank you for giving me the time to give our update, and before I leave, I would be remiss in not thanking December for all of her hard work and the diligence that she puts into providing the paperwork for our monthly meetings. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Chris.
Okay, the next speaker, Mayor, is Debbie Green. Ms. Green, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, so just on behalf of the Education Advisory Board, just wanted to thank everyone for all the tremendous response to the flamingos, and for anyone out there who's not familiar with the flamingos, where we're continuing, these flamingos continue to keep their flock moving around the town. So it's, we've had tremendous response. We've had over 200 residents that have participated in it, one flock at a time, moving around, and it's just, um, we, we've actually, yeah, over 200 residents that have participated in it and raised over $19,000 so far. So it's just been incredible, and we want to keep it going. And just one other, we're, we're planning to have a virtual bingo night in mid-April, so just for everyone, just to keep an eye out for that, and, um, I think that's it, and just thanks again to everybody that supported the, the flamingos. Thank you.
Great.
Okay, Mayor, the next speaker is George Morris. Mr. Morris, can you hear us?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman. At our last meeting with the Drainage Board, we were discussing fill removal penalties and different ideas on how to approach that. We came up with several different ideas, and a lot of the councilmen attended, and we're working, we're in progress now, coming up with something to present to you guys for that. And another big item for discussion was, at the time, was a potential scope of change of work for the asphalt on Southwest 188. And since our meeting, I'm sure Rod will get into that, but for the most part, forfeited doing some work in exchange of $163,000 credit, which is a phenomenal thing to do for the town. On top of which, the one-year warranty which we had on 188 has now been doubled to two years. So I don't want to take too much of Rod's power away, but nonetheless, I'm sure he'll get into and explain that, but that's been our progress for the board, and it's been a very productive month. Thank you for the opportunity to present. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you, George.
Okay, Mayor, we have no other public speakers.
All right, very good. Councilmember comments?
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be really brief. I've only got a couple of things to go over here. The rest of it is in the agenda. Just wanted to mention that there's a currently ongoing right now, today was the first day tomorrow, and Saturday is COVID testing at the barn. It's a free service. You go right through the, like a drive-through area, never leave your vehicle, and there's no cost to you, and they're also accepting pre-registration for vaccines when it opens up to the lower, to the youngsters that are a little younger than me, for, to be inoculated. So, and that's at the Rolling Oaks Barn here tomorrow, Saturday, and Saturday. And I think it's 10 to 4, Russell, if I'm right, incorrect, correct me on that.
Councilmember is 10 to 4 tomorrow and 11 to 3 on Saturday.
Got it. Thank you, sir. And then this, this Saturday at the same time, and you can get tested, and then you can like drop off your used motor oil and batteries and fire some light bulbs because it has mat at the barn, and we do have shredding. So we're, we're multi-purposing everything this Saturday. Come by and get rid of the old tire, the old cans of paint, what have you, and shredding of your personal correspondence that needs to be removed for possible identities, have things of that nature. That's all happening here at the Rolling Oaks Barn, and it's townwide. You just need to show your town ID to, I mean, your identification, show that you're a resident of Southwest Ranches for the hazmat portion of it. And, and I said it was short, and I meant it, and I'll conclude with this Sunday, I put the clocks ahead, one, one hour daylight savings time, just a reminder. And shows back, back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Who'd like to go next?
I can be real quick, too.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
So at the last Drainage Committee meeting, there was a lot of discussion on, on the various types of fill permits that we have, the penalties, the, the purpose behind it. And it was a good meeting. It was a very good meeting. Thank you, Steve, for, for tasking the Drainage Committee with, with looking at this. It, it, an interesting thing happened this week. One of our neighbors basically attempted to fill out a level zero between us and Broward County, and I'd like her to recount that at the next Drainage Committee meeting, because I had no idea what a challenge it is, and we're talking about the free permit that the town provides for up to what, two loads of fill. So Rod, if you would put it on the next Drainage Committee meeting agenda, I think Debbie Green is going to fill our ears on, on the challenges and, and why we probably need to make some changes. Now, I know that Debbie reached out to Russell, and Russell and Rod have been working on this, and they've actually really jumped on it, and they're looking to begin talking with the county about the wetlands determinations and things like that. So they've actually got a jumpstart on it, so like, I think Rod could probably report at the next meeting next month, what progress they've made there. Other than thanking the Seek Society again for, for helping us with the fundraiser and the walk, while we were talking, I signed up, so I'm already registered to do it. I can't wait. I've been doing it every year. It's so much fun. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be real brief also. Wanted to speak real quick, if I could, about the mail theft in District 3. We've had a lot of mailbox physically broken into. They're not just going up taking the mail from the mailbox. From what I understand, they're breaking into the lock boxes themselves. So I, I just asked the neighbors to be very, uh, uh, you know, on lookout. Anything suspicious, anybody walking down the street that doesn't look like they belong there, notify the neighbors if you can. We're working real hard here, and still talking to people about trying to get some kind of a group together, such as Country Estates and Sunshine Ranches. All have their homeowners association where they can reach out and touch bases real quick with each other. But it's a real problem here in Southwest Ranches, the mail theft. I know it took place in Rolling Oaks. I know there was a chase that was involved with the police officer, and they were throwing mail out the cars as they were speeding away. So it's not just one particular neighborhood, it's all over, so we need to look out for each other. Thank you.
Thank you. David, yeah.
All right. Mr. Mayor, if I may, as the council liaison to the Royal Public Arts Board, I know how important the Founder's Park mural project is to the board members. That's why I was in favor of providing funding for the board to move forward with this project. At the last council meeting, it was determined that we discuss this in more detail at this meeting. Since that meeting, I've been working with the staff on this, and I'm pleased to share this update with you tonight. The goal for this project is to find a way to move this project along as quickly as possible. My, my hope is that we can do it during the current fiscal year. I think that we have a way to exact, do that exactly. Here's what I would like to propose. There is approximately 100 feet of wall that lends itself to this project, and I propose we use it. Continuing a project all the way to the southern end would be a waste because it's just, there's no visibility for that part of the wall. However, the 100 feet I suggest would have a tremendous visibility to everybody coming along Griffin Road and to the users of the Founder's Park. It allows plenty of space for a significant mural capturing the spirit of the town of Southwest Ranches. Town staff is currently obtaining estimates to pressure clean the wall, seal coat it, and provide a base coat so that we can turn it over a blank canvas to the artist. Now, I believe that the town should also cover the cost of the materials for the artists to use, such as paint, et cetera. And while we can ask the artist to donate their time and talent, it's not fair to the artist to have them cover the cost of the materials as well. And there is some good news to share also. The Southwest Ranches Parks Foundation is willing to match the town's contribution to this project, cutting the cost to the town in half. While staff is putting the final numbers together, I believe that this will be the right path forward for us. Once we know the costs, I will then ask you for your vote to fund this project, hopefully during this current year. I hope you all remain supportive of this effort, and I'll keep you posted on the progress. Thanks. That's it.
Great. Thank you, David. Yeah, I certainly do support that project. I'm looking forward to seeing it all come together. And then, and thanks for staying on it and moving forward. Just a couple of things, I'll be relatively quick, too. Just wanted to say that we're continuing to work and prepare. Going through a lot of the paperwork and the numbers, crunching the numbers for the trim, making sure that that will work out well this time year. We still don't, I will say, it's still not, I'm not comfortable with it yet, but we're getting closer and we are working diligently on it, so more to come on that. Appreciate Andy and Marty and, and everybody working together, get that done. And then the other thing I just wanted to touch on was the survey. We've got the survey out. We're getting a great response to the survey, which I am very excited about. Really good to, good to see all those. I, I haven't seen any of the results yet. I don't think we've really done any results thing, so, but I'm basing it on the number of the stacks of paper that I see piling up in Andy's office, and that's all good news, so. I'm pleased about that. I did get some calls about some folks that, for whatever reason, did not have the survey, and I just wanted to say that if you, if that's, if that happened to you, maybe somebody tossed it before, before you got to see it, that kind of a thing at your household, that we do have extras here at Town Hall that we can make available on a limited basis. So, so don't feel like you've missed out. If you'd like to fill it out and you can't find the survey, please contact Town Hall and we'll get you a survey. All right, so with that said, Keith, any legal comments?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll be super brief. The legislative session is in session, which means that we've been very active in trying to amend bills that will directly impact the town. Two of the most important bills that we are working with are lobbyists and legislative officials in, in trying to modify, and it's been very challenging. A lot of time this week is spent on this Senate Bill 88, which would allow agricultural tourism to count as a primary use on a property, and a new one that the mayor advises of, that we found out was moving forward without comment, which is code violations. If reported, the one reporting the violation has to give their name and it has to be public to who reported them. So both will have an impact on the town, so we're diligently working to see if we can find compromise language. I know Andy's going to talk on the, on the refinancing of the town properties, so I'll only chime into that if necessary, but no further public comments. Over to Andy.
Great. Thank you, Keith. I just wanted to do, before, Andy, before you start, I just wanted to do a quick shout out to Representative Bartman. It was in a conversation with her that she, she had heard about this thing where it would no longer be allowed to be anonymous to do code complaints, and obviously, being a reactive town that is, could really be, you know, not a good thing for our town. So I appreciate her not only alerting to us to it, but also speaking out against it. She, she, we were able to watch the video of the, of the session, the committee meeting, and could see that she spoke out pretty, pretty forcefully and even, even named us by name, which I appreciate, which I appreciate, so. All right, Andy, to you. Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, Bob, if you have a comment?
Just a quick question. Keith, she was in touch with me as well, and is this something we can send our friends from Southern to, to help out with?
Our friends at Southern, Southern Strategies?
Yeah.
Sorry, I thought you meant your company for a second, Bob.
No, 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 no.
They are well aware of the issue and they're diligently working on it. We have chimed in, and I know the mayor's, again, as you mentioned, spoke to Representative Bartman numerous times today. Not today, in the, in the past couple of days, so we're working on it. We'll keep you updated. We're trying to see if compromise language will be acceptable to the legislator.
Thank you.
Okay, to you, Andy.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I only, I have one item tonight, and Keith alluded to it. As you all know, the town entered into a P3 partnership on the old CCA site back in October of last year. The town has, has debt on that property. It is financed, and because we had bought it, the town owned it. It was a non-taxable note that we had on that. Because we're converting into a for-profit venture with a partner, we knew at, at that time that we were going to need to refinance that, that property. Since that time, Marty has, has been doing his due diligence and, and has been shopping that around. The best terms that he's been able to uncover has been with TD Bank. And so what I'd like to ask the council for is consensus, and Marty's certainly available for questions for you. But I'd like to ask the council for consent, consensus tonight for me to execute the, the interest rate lock agreement. It doesn't commit us to the loan. It doesn't close the loan. Council will have the ability to peruse all those documents and go through that at the, at the appropriate time when we bring it to you for your approval. The only thing I'm asking you for tonight is your approval to just sign and lock the interest rate. So in other than that, Marty and I are certainly available, and Keith, for any questions you may have.
You need a motion for that, Andy?
Yes, yeah, I'd like to get a motion, yes.
All right, I'll make a motion to support. All right. I'll make a motion to support, uh, Andy's request to refinance the property or to look at the rates and refinance, to refinance the property.
I think it's to lock in the rate.
Oh, to lock, sorry.
Correct, to lock, to lock in the rate.
Better word. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Marty, if maybe you can just talk a little bit about the difference in rates and kind of the rate environment, uh, in just a couple of minutes. I mean, speak now, but.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
We're not, we're not looking for the 20-minute version. We're looking for like the two or three minutes.
Yes, um, it's, it's fantastic rate. Uh, we've been very careful. We've been tracking it. 1.98, we're presently at 3.25. Uh, it's a 15-year note with a 10-year call provision. Uh, we have a few options. We're going to formally present everything at April 25th. Uh, this rate is 1.98. You, uh, need, need to lock in this rate now because rates are higher. We checked with League of Cities, we checked with, um, Centennial Bank, we checked with other banks. Uh, no one can beat the TD Bank deal. And at the presentation, uh, we, uh, could have, uh, TD Bank, uh, and other council with us, uh, for a formal approval. But tonight's the rate lock, uh, at 1.98%. Uh, will commit us to TD Bank for closing.
Thank you, Marty. Are there any questions or concerns, comments from the council?
Mayor, I just want to make one, one comment. Once we lock in the rate, yes, we're in good shape because the rates are. But I just want to make sure the council knows that if for some reason we didn't want to refinance, there is a penalty. So, uh, once we lock it in, we are on the road to refinance. I just want everyone to know that.
Good point. Thank you, Keith.
Keith, what is that penalty?
Uh, Mar- Marty, how much is it?
Uh, it fluctuate ba- based on the future interest rate change, but, uh, the range has been 240,000 to 295,000 dollar penalty. So, uh, we're not going to not lock it. We're gonna, we're gonna close next month. 300,000 dollar penalty.
The, the terms of this note are better than our current note.
Great. Any other comments, concerns from the council?
One question.
I do see, I do see, uh, one hand up, um, and I'd like to recognize that. Since we're taking a vote.
Mr. Cox, can you hear us?
Yeah. Thank you very much. As a resident, I still would like to see the return on investment on this project. Return on assets on this project by the ask for last, last November, October, November. And also, uh, don't be too proud. Some of us financial people in town have commented the last three or four years that we could refinance this note at a lower interest rate. And in addition to that, we're not lowering the town's cost. We're lowering the profiteer who signed the agreement with the town. So I hope that we do receive an adequate return on our investment and on our asset. Thank you for allowing me to comment.
Yeah, thank you, Fred. Yep. All right. Yes, Russell, if you could please call the roll.
Certainly. Councilmember Albretton.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman.
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Yeah, that's all I have.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Item number nine. Russell, if you could read that into the record.
Certainly, certainly, Mayor. This is an ordinance on second reading. This is an ordinance in the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida concerning water protection and conservation. Providing for landscape irrigation restrictions and exemptions, providing for enforcement and penalties. Providing for administrative variance relief, providing for codification, providing for the repeal of all conflicting ordinances. Providing for separability and providing an effective date.
Excellent. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Bob. Is there any discussion on this? Yeah, Bob?
Well, um, I think we know what this is. This is second reading, but can somebody explain this to the public? There's a lot of people on the phone right now that probably don't know what this is.
Okay, um, Andy, you want to, uh, walk us through it?
Yeah, yeah, if I may, uh, very briefly, uh, this, this is a requirement mandated by South Florida Water Management District on all municipalities. And, and I'll, I'll, let me, let me quantify that for a moment. Uh, we don't have to do it, but if we don't sign the agreement, we would be ineligible from receiving grant funding for projects from the Water Management District. And, and just to give you an example of what that would mean, what that financial impact would be to the town. The wetlands project that we put together behind Tom Thumb as part of that, uh, Colusa Corners project. We received a $100,000 grant from the Water Management District. So if we don't pass this ordinance, we would be ineligible from receiving that kind of funding going forward. That's, that's the reason we brought this forward.
Excellent. Thank you, Andy. All right. Any other comment from the council? Looks like we do have, um, open up to the public.
Mr. Starkweather, can you hear us, sir?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can somebody tell me what this does to the homeowners for water in their yard? Or the landscapers for water, watering their plants?
So.
Please.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Is there any other, any other public comment before we?
No, Mayor, that's it.
Okay, so the, I mean, the intent of this is obviously to save water. Um, we, you know, we are obviously concerned about it from the standpoint that there are some, some restrictions in there that, um, would not be something we would prefer. Um, they, they have been a good, obviously, South Florida Water Management has been a very good partner for us in getting a lot of projects done. And so what we have done is put together the wording in, you know, in such a way that it, uh, I think it will work out for both, both the town and South Florida Water Management, so. All right, um, any other comments or questions? All right, Russell, if you could please call the question?
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Albretton.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman.
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
All right, item number 10, please.
Okay, Mayor. Item number 10. It's ordinance on first reading, and this is an ordinance in the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida. Amending the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code. Article 10 entitled definition of terms to define the terms veterinary clinic and mobile services unit. Amending, um, sorry, amending, uh, Article 45 entitled agricultural and rural districts. Section 045 dash 050 permitted and prohibited uses to prohibit veterinary clinics, veterinary hospitals. And commercial boarding and breeding kennels as principal uses in the A1 and A2 zoning districts. Providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for separability and providing for an effective date.
Very good. Thank you, Russell.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion or?
Mayor, maybe I can just chime in real quick and then Jeff Cadence may want something to add. And, and that is, I, I want to make sure everyone understands this is, uh, directly related to cleaning up the code. To make the code comply with comprehensive land use plan that doesn't allow commercial uses, primary commercial uses. In, uh, these land use categories. And as a result of that, where we had issues where we didn't recognize it until a problem occurred. Is that, you know, someone could just look at the zoning code and think, oh, I can have a veterinary clinic, uh, at my house. Uh, without understanding that that code violated the comprehensive plan. It was just a carryover from the 1960s from Broward County. That the comp plan controls everything and the comp plan states you cannot have a commercial use within those land use categories. So while people may have misunderstood what this ordinance does. All it does is bring the zoning code into compliance with what already exists, uh, in the comprehensive plan. Uh, Jeff, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I don't.
Okay, great. Thanks for that clarification. All right, any, uh, council comment on that before opening up to the public? All right, Russell.
Certainly, um, we have two speakers so far. Mayor James Starkweather being the first, Mr. Starkweather, can you hear us?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, sir.
How are you? You know, I really never say much in this town. I just, you know, I'm all for just about what everybody does. This one bothers me a little more. I wasn't sure about the Springfield. That's why I asked about this, that one. But this ordinance right here, we know why this one's being changed. And you know, Keith, I like you and stuff, but you know, I think you're kind of wrong in the kind of the wording that you used. We know that this all comes down to one house, one person's problems that we're going after everybody else for. This is rule out here. We have horses, we have cows. Why can't we have a clinic out here? It just doesn't make any sense. And I think it's wrong. And I think that you all want rule out here, that this has to be with it. I can understand going after other people, but this is crazy over one person. And we know that this is all about one person. This is about one problem with one commissioner on that board and one neighbor. Thank you.
Thanks, Jane.
Okay, uh, the next speaker is, uh, Jennifer Dacton. Ms. Dacton, can you hear us?
I think so. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
I, I, after reading the, uh, extended agenda, I also realized that this will affect dog grooming trailers and dog groomers as well. You guys are ju- again, going after one problem and one person and you're going to be affecting everyone. And then they also want to talk about kennels. You know, when you look at a definition of kennels, it's dog sitting. And I can sit here and look at my computer and I know that many of you have people in Southwest Ranches that babysit your dogs. So that makes it a kennel, which makes it illegal. So you're sitting here and you're trying to push all these rules and regulations and it's going to affect a lot of people. And it's just going to go down. You know, what is a definition of a breeder? If you have one litter a year, you now considered a breeder? If you have dogs and you keep them in a kennel type atmosphere, are you then considered a kennel? You know, you guys are really grouping a gigantic group of people all in together. And I think it's really important that you read all the rules and regulations before you pass them and really see who it's going to affect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, the next speaker is Fred Cox. Mr. Cox, can you hear us?
Yes, sir. Russell, I can hear you fine. I guess my big question is why? Why? Been in town 21 years. This workshop at six o'clock was trying to ensure that we were, would remain rule. I don't know of any problems that veterinary clinics have caused. If so, maybe we should enforce the rules on the book, but not prohibit them. And it's sort of a question of who are we and who do we want to be? We have light manufacturing in this town. We have welding shops in this town. We have a number of commercial garages in this town. We have plumbing companies in this town. We have a dentist on Old Sheridan Street. We have real estate offices in this town. We have multiple commercial businesses in this town. I'm just puzzled, just like Jim stated and Jennifer didn't comment, but she's used the vet in question. I, I don't know why we're prohibiting everything. You know, the last hour, we're for agriculture. This hour, we don't want vets. Two sort of go together. And I'm concerned over the implication of the mobile clinic. Can my, my blacksmith come out and horseshoe my, my horses? Could the dentist come out and work on my horse's teeth? You know, we're, this is a fork in the road. And my question is, I, I don't have the facts in this case. I don't know the facts in this case, but boom, we're going to pass a new law. Why is my question? Thank you for your consideration and I sincerely, sincerely hope and pray that one of y'all would explain why we need a new law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Next speaker, Mayor, is, uh, I believe it's Noel Hollingsworth. Mr. Hollingsworth?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, uh, to the first lady speaker, if you'll take a look on, uh, page 18 of, uh, 265. Says permitted accessory uses to a single family dwelling, which is below the section that they're talking about changing. And it says very simple, keeping breeding of animals subject to section 45 dash 30F. It is permitted in all residential areas. Also, home offices subject to section 35 dash O30 pertaining to conditional uses. And this is to Fred. If you'll take a look at that, it'll say conditional. And the home home offices, the general rule is that they do not have more than one or two people come to the office every now and then. So you're working in your own home. You're taking care of your own business from there. So that is the general subject there. I think that answers both of the questions. Both of them are allowed, but having an office where you have millions of people coming to it is not allowed within a residential district. You have to put it in a commercial district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. The next speaker, Mayor, is, uh, Michelle McBride. Miss McBride, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Proceed.
Hi, thank you. Um, well, this is disappointing to hear, I must say. Um, it, it sounds a little all too familiar for me and it's, it's just very sad. Um, although I've never used the veterinary office that this has seemed to have prompted. I know that many residents here have and, and especially Jennifer spoke. I mean, I know that she has prize goats. It's nice to be able to take your sick animal to someone in the middle of the night. And I just don't understand why this wouldn't be allowed. Um, and, and you know, with all due respect to Mr. Poliakoff. I just don't understand what he was saying about projected comprehensive plan. It, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I could be wrong, but in the A1 zoning, which I did a little research because I too was confused about all of this. But I thought that veterinary was allowed. Um, and I could be wrong, but it just seems like in a community such as ours that has so many animals needing veterinary care. And we do need it, we need it in the middle of the night, that it would be wonderful to have someone close to us to be able to, um, help us and help our animals when we need it. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Mayor, the next speaker is Tiffany Trotter. Ms. Trotter?
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, hi. Um, so I, I'm a veterinarian and I live in the ranches. And according to this, it, it almost sounds like I cannot have my mobile practice because I'm an equine veterinarian. Um, and I live at my house and that's where my, my mobile unit stays. So I find this to be, I, I, I don't know. I don't know what you guys are trying to accomplish with this, but I live here and then that, another equine vet lives across the street from me. And our offices are at our house because I don't need to have a clinic type setting. So are you trying to tell me that I can't live in the ranches now because I practice sort of out of my house? Because I go to people's farms in Southwest Ranches? I mean, I just find this, I, I, I don't really find this to be very fair. And it's almost like you guys are trying to put small businesses out of business in the ranches instead of supporting them. And it's almost like you guys are trying to put small businesses out of business in the ranches instead of supporting them. So that's, that's all I had to say about that.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, the next speaker is Dominique Atai. Mr. Atai?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You can proceed.
Well, you know, I, like Jen, have had goats and other animals, and we've had emergencies. Dr. Trotter has tended to some of those emergencies. I have used the other vet in question for many emergencies. And we moved out here to have this rural lifestyle. And right now, there's a nursery setting up on our Dead End Street in Rolling Oaks that's going to bring a whole host of traffic in here, not related to animals or our equestrian lifestyle. And that's okay, but here we are shutting down people helping our lifestyle. So that, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker, it looks like that's, again, it's up to you, Mayor.
Okay, no, I think we've heard. So I feel like we need to, we need to explain this further. Bob, you gave a presentation in a previous meeting that really laid out there how this differs from a normal veterinary-type situation. I do think we need to be very careful in what we're doing here in that it does not affect, that it affects the abusers of these tools without affecting the ones that are doing it properly and in, in, in the right, in the right fashion. We need to be very, very careful here. So I don't know if anybody can speak to that. I'm very sensitive to this comments that we just heard. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to speak to that, please. The, the ordinance does two things. It does change the permitted uses. And like, like Keith said, we do have an inconsistency between our code and our comprehensive plan. And a comprehensive plan does not allow these principal commercial uses to exist in our town, in where, within these residential land use designations, which is where we have all of our ag districts, our rural state, rural ranch districts. The other thing that it does is that it specifically identifies mobile vet units and similar type things. You know, whether you have a mobile dog grooming business, or you cut hair, you go to people's houses. Those are not regulated as land uses. They're mobile uses. They're itinerant in nature. Just like the plumbing guy that comes to your house to fix your plumbing, they're not subject to this ordinance. And it's very clear that if the, that if the mobile unit goes to people's homes to provide veterinary services, and the services are provided on the property of the customer, that they're completely exempt from this ordinance. They're not considered a veterinary, veterinary clinic. We do this in the definitions by defining what a veterinary clinic is and what a mobile unit is. And we require that that mobile unit provide the services on the premises of the customer and not provide those services at any other location, whether it's a third party, where they're parking all day and having customers come there, or at their house, or wherever it is, they, they keep the equipment overnight. So it's, nothing's changing in terms of these mobile vets. They're very much permitted. Nothing changes under this ordinance. It only prohibits permanent stationary veterinary clinics and somebody who might use mobile facilities in a stationary manner and not consistent with the truly itinerant nature of a mobile business like that.
I, I also, Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
I, I, I clearly didn't explain this as well as I, I thought I did. So I, you know, but Noel actually did a wonderful job addressing some of the questions. But I, I just want to elaborate a little bit. Every other zoning category had this proper in the code. So all this does is it recognizes the fact that this zoning category, A1, A2, had a Scribner's error in the code that didn't conform with our comprehensive plan. It was never changed in this one zoning category. Every other zoning category had it properly written. I heard Ms. Trotter speak. I quickly looked up her property. She's in rural estates. She's not in A1, A2 zoning category, so this does not impact her at all. As well as some of the other speakers who spoke, it doesn't impact them at all. This only deals with the A1, A2 category and the fact that it was written a long time ago and was never amended like the other zoning categories were to show that commercial uses such as vet clinics cannot be a principal use, cannot be the main use on a piece of property. And that being said, it already violates the comprehensive plan. So if the council were to change its mind and to say, we are okay with it as written, we don't want to change it, then we would have to bring back a comprehensive plan amendment to enable it to occur because right now there's a discrepancy between your comp plan and your zoning code, and the comp plan prevails. I, I, I did think Noel did a great job explaining it. I, I think Jeff did too. Happy to answer more questions, but this is just being done to fix a discrepancy so that residents aren't confused when they look at the code as far as what's permitted and what's not.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Were these, these uses that are now being changed, were they ever allowed to operate like that?
Jeff, I asked you that question recently, and you said as far as you know that the, these zoning categories never allowed a principal commercial use. Is that, is that still your answer? You were looking into that?
Well, I think we're talking about differently phrased questions, but this, the zoning, the, the permitted uses in the A1 and A2 zoning that allow these, these principal commercial uses have never been consistent with our comprehensive plan. So as a legal matter, to use Keith's language, they've never been permitted. It's been an error in the code because there's, because it is inconsistent. It is more permissive than our land use plan allows. And so regardless of the fact that our code has said this and that this came from Broward County's code before us, and we didn't put this in here. It was carried over from Broward County's code, and the mistake was really never noticed or, or fixed until now, until recently. But it's always been in conflict since the town has been in existence. It's always been in conflict with our land use plan. And the land use plan would always take precedence and effectively prohibit these commercial uses in A1 and A2.
A follow-up, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
So if my understanding is correct, that this carried over from Broward County and the mistake was originated from Broward County, or was, or the error? Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Any further comments?
Yeah, it's just a general comment. Mayor, Mayor, this was not, mobile veterinary clinics were not, that are, were the primary uses as the residential area. That was never, that's never been permitted, I think, east of Rolling Oaks and Colling Road. Correct me if I'm wrong, Keith. It's R E N R R. It's been a non-permitted use.
A, a mobile clinic is defined as exactly what you said, mobile. It goes to people's homes and provides a service. It's not landlocked on a piece of property where anyone can go there, then it becomes a veterinary clinic. So, so mobile clinics are well-supported in the town and are not being regulated at all. This is dealing with turning your single-family home into a veterinary clinic.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I wanted to make everybody clear on. It's, that would be like if I was a doctor and my home turned into more than my home, where all the customers come to me and I never come to them. That's what this is dealing with.
A, a good example was, was recently raised by a judge, which is just because I have a food truck and make deliveries doesn't mean I can leave it in front of my single-family house and become a restaurant.
That's, that's an excellent analogy considering what I just left. Thank you. I'm done, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other comments, questions?
No, one other comment, though, just so everybody understands that this is the first reading. There will be another reading. And so if there's something we need to tweak between now and later, a couple of weeks from now or a month, we have the ability to do so. So I just want to point that out to the general public.
And, and again, I just want to clarify, Councilmember Jablonsky, there's not really anything that can be tweaked unless you fix the comprehensive, change the comprehensive plan. Because all that we're doing tonight is, is putting the code directly into consistency with comprehensive plan. So if you wanted to change it thereafter, you would have to start with the comp plan and then go back and change the code.
Genuinely noted. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, Russell, if you can please call the question.
Mayor, Councilmember Albretton? Yes. Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Based upon the arguments and, and the analogies that were made, I'm going to go ahead and vote yes on this, but I'm going to do it because of the arguments that were made on this. If, if the changes need to be made through the comp plan, that should be addressed that way. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
And Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Right, item number 11.
Okay, Mayor, the item number 11 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an agreement with Evans Contracting Services, Inc. in the amount of $94,026.0 for Phase 1 of the Florida Department of Environmental Protection-funded Dykes Road Drainage Improvement Project, approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year 21 adopted budget, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing for an effective date.
Great, thank you. We have a motion?
I'm moved.
All right, is there any comment, questions on this item, discussion? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item?
Don't see any hands raised, Mayor.
All right. Russell, if you could please call the question?
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Albretton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes, Mayor.
Thank you. Item number 12?
Item number 12 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the Second Amendment to the interlocal agreement with Broward County, providing for the division and distribution of the proceeds of the transportation system surtax, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute said agreement and providing an effective date.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item?
I don't see any speakers, Mayor.
Okay. If you could please call the question, Russell?
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Albretton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes. Item number 13?
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a purchase order in the amount of $3,363.0 to Crimson Technology Products for the purchase of three handheld radar units from the Town of Southwest Ranches Police Department, authorizing the use of forfeiture funds and a fiscal year 2021 budget amendment for this purchase, authorizing the town administrator to execute the purchase order and providing an effective date.
Great, thank you.
Second.
All right. I do want to make a comment. Actually, I should let Jim make a comment on this one because I know this is near and dear to his heart. But these are really, this is, this is going to help really control the traffic here in town, especially in the neighborhood roads.
Yeah, Mayor, it's made a big difference in this, in District 3. I have seen some people get two tickets. I've not seen anybody get the third ticket, but I have seen a lot of first tickets. I think there were somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 or 25 tickets given out on that one Friday. They love the guns. They're not sitting out in the middle of the street anymore. And some of the people get a little hostile. They did have to call for backup for one unit. Got very belligerent, and he was actually a resident of Southwest Ranches. And he got quite hot that she was stealth, and he didn't see her until it was the last minute and got caught. But I, I think it's made a, a, a big difference. I'd like to see these three guns in everybody's hands. Right now, they're passing that one around, but these other three, it'll make a big difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, any public comment?
Don't see any hands raised, Mayor.
Okay, seeing none. Russell, if you could please call the question?
Certainly. Councilmember Albretton?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes. Item number 14?
14 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending resolution number 2015-017 relating to the town's advisory committee board policy pertaining to meeting attendance, authorizing the town administrator to implement the new policy and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve? Second.
Do you?
Second.
So we're trying to improve the attendance in the boards and, and ensure that folks that are on the board are, are invested in, in what is going on there and participating and, and valuing the time of those that, that are there and that are working. So this is just, I think, a nice, a good improvement and will help to get more involvement in the boards and, and get more, more done.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question?
Sure.
Does this just codify the initial decision we had about the attendance? Or is this start the clock rolling as of the date that this should pass?
Looks like Andy would like to respond to that.
Yeah, I may, Mayor. Councilmember Kuzinski is 100% correct. This, this resolution codifies the decision that you all made when you appointed this year's boards back in December. So we've been following this policy really since the, the boards began meeting in January. At the end of this month, you'll get a first quarter attendance report for our boards, and we'll let you know how they're doing. But we've, we've been following the policy that, that you all approved in your discussions in December. This just formalizes that discussion.
Great, thank you. So it is effective as the start of the year, but this is the formal codification of it. Got you. All right, any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Russell, if you could please call the question?
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Albretton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes. Okay, item number 15, which is a late addition to the agenda. Russell, if you could please read that. Okay, item number 15, which is a late addition to the agenda. Russell, if you could please read that in.
Certainly, Mayor. Item number 15 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, enacting a zoning in progress pursuant to Section 005 dash 240 of the Town's Unified Land Development Code to further regulate any new commercial nursery, expansion of an existing commercial nursery, or storage or growth of any plant material in containers, enacting a zoning in progress for a period of time not to exceed six months or until the Town's revised regulations have been adopted, whichever sooner, providing for conflict, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Great, thank you. I want to just say a couple of words on this. We've had a situation occur just here recently where a retail nursery, I'm not talking about wholesale, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about wholesale, I'm talking about a retail establishment there in a neighborhood that is going to generate a tremendous amount of traffic that is basically a commercial establishment in a neighborhood. This would have been prevented if a ordinance that was brought forth when I was on the council before. One of the last things I tried to do before my term ran out in 2018 was to get this passed, and I did get it in front of the council at that time. But it was not approved and it was rejected. It was sent back to the comp plan board. When I was on the comp plan board, I brought it forth to the council again in just last year. And it would have prevented this type of activity, and it was rejected without even discussion. Very disappointed, I was very disappointed in that. And unfortunately, now we're seeing the results of that not being taken up at that time. And by the way, this is not the only place. We've got another one. We've got, well, we have, we have, let's just say we've got several in town where this has happened since, since it was originally brought to the council. It's time to resolve this. It's time to get this loophole closed. And what this does is a zoning in progress that says, while the comp plan board finalizes the wording on it, and before it comes back to us, that this restricts this type of use from happening between now and then. So we can close this loophole and no further entities will come in and take advantage of the loophole that's there of opening up a commercial business in our residential neighborhoods. So that's what this is about. It's a temporary closure on it or where we will not allow this type of business temporarily for six months to give us time to get that ordinance passed to make it permanent. And I appreciated that it got on the agenda. I apologize that it was not on the original agenda that was sent out. This came up to my attention. The most recent occurrence of it came to my attention just earlier this week. And frankly, I didn't want to wait another two weeks to clamp it down and put an end to it. So that's what this is. That's why it was put on here at the last minute. And but I think it's critical, and we certainly will have a lot of time to discuss the the nursery landscape ordinance before it's approved before the council. So I'm going to make those comments upfront. Welcome any other comments that the council would have to make.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
Back in September last year, when three of us were running and we had that exchange of ideas. This was one of the issues that I spoke about, and I'm very proud to support this measure. I think it's important, and as I said then, it was, it was wrong to shut it down when it was. And I'm glad it's back on this agenda, and I support it.
Thank you, David. I also want to just say that the two council members that are still on the board here spoke in favor of this ordinance at that time. So it was not them that was shooting it down.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please, Jim.
Mr. Mayor, I had the privilege of sitting on that board with you. Session, a lot of back and forth, and I thought what was brought to the council at that particular time was, it was a good policy to come, you know, for the board to consider. And like I said, I was kind of bewildered when it wasn't, but it does have to come to a head somewhere, someplace, and this is the first step. Thank you.
Thank you.
My turn?
Yes, absolutely.
I've been screaming my head off for a while. And this is all just another piece of the puzzle that gets, falls into place. The zoning in progress is will allow us some breathing room to, you know, to work on the landscape ordinance and do it correctly. And this will stop any sort of a land rush or anything, you know, metaphorically speaking, to open up retail nurseries and commercial nurseries in the middle of a residential area. So full support of this, as you know, and, you know, I was screaming about it a couple of meetings ago along with the fill ordinance and the whatnot. So I'm glad to see that, glad to see we're making some headway and we buying ourselves some of their breathing space, right? So I know, I know some issues that we need to be taking care of. This is one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment. I welcome this coming back. This has been worked on for what roughly three years, and it was shut down. So it probably needs a little bit of tweaking just with some retrospective and some hindsight, but I'm glad this is coming back to us.
Right, thank you. All right. Public comment?
Okay, Mayor, we have a few people raising their hands. The first one looks like it's Noel Hollinsworth. Mr. Hollinsworth, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, sir.
Yes. Bob, it's four years, not three years. Also, what I request is the council take the old ordinance that was knocked down in September. Go through it and put a red line through any section that you do not like if you are referring it back to the Comprehensive Plan Board. And then the Comprehensive Plan Board will delete those sections and immediately send it back to you. So that is the suggestion. Please take it under consideration and look through the ordinance. If you don't like something, cross it out. Comprehensive Plan Board will then delete it and send the revised ordinance back to you. If there's no changes, all it takes is a simple vote to send it back forward, because it's been worked on for four years so many times that I have it memorized mostly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Neil.
Mayor, the next speaker is John Bavaro. Mr. Bavaro, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak. We've been out here 28 years, not only that I'm, am I speaking for myself and my family, but also I'm the voice of most of the other 11 families that live on our one-way residential street. I and we are opposing what is actively occurring on a vacant lot neighboring west to our property. It's a lot that is 1.84 acres, and workers are currently clearing and filling the property at first with no permit. Now they have a permit to implement every homeowner's nightmare. The plan is to have a commercial retail nursery open to the public on that site. This is allowed and should be outraged, it should outrage every homeowner in Southwest Ranches. It makes no sense to have a commercial business on a residential one-way street. So-called nursery will literally be sandwiched between residences. We have many concerns about having this happen, and again, we oppose it. They're allowed to have unlimited amount of trucks going in and out of the property, including storage of commercial trucks on site. Potentially, they can keep an overnight person living there, calling that person a security guard. The safety of our children on our street is a big concern. Increasing traffic will generally also mean speeding. Traffic is a big concern with our children not being able to safely ride their bikes on the residential street in Southwest Ranches. Noise is another big concern. You know, you have trucks unloading rocks, gravel, other material, tailgates slamming closed, front-end loaders, materials loading into delivery trucks, constant backup beeping from machinery. This replaces chickens, birds, and other sounds we move to Southwest Ranches to enjoy. Use of pesticides, insecticides, air and groundwater contamination, including to a canal that is in the back of the property is a big concern. Business signs posted in front of the property, again, on a one-way residential street, will be allowed. They will have to have a retail shop, office building, facility for workers and guests on site, potentially continuous music playing for customers, that this is allowed to occur every day from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Special sales events attracting large crowds potentially will be permitted three times a year. How would you like to live next door to this nightmare? I have not even mentioned the detriment to property values on our street as a result of this permitted business venture. This will bring strangers into our neighborhood, our street. We talked about maltheft and other thefts also. My house in particular will be now sandwiched between a landscaper to the east and this new monstrosity to the west. The landscaper who rents the property to my east has had code violations in the past, along with claw trucks, chippers, dump trucks, front-end loaders, not counting landscaping trucks that come in and out of the property for the past six years or so. Noise. You haven't lived until you hear diesel trucks revving up at six o'clock in the morning, including Saturdays and Sundays, returning at 8:00 p.m. at night, people yelling over the truck noise so workers can communicate with each other. The slamming of tailgates of dump trucks on a continual basis, continuing beeping noise of trucks, front-end loaders backing up. I'm sure by now you get the picture of what the town has allowed and continues to allow on a supposedly residential street. This too could have happened to you and your neighbors. It seems particularly in Rolling Oaks. I'm sure you would not embrace this with open arms by any means and allow this on your street. We need help to keep Southwest Ranches rural and to regulate where you are allowed a business to operate. And also now we're talking about bringing strangers into our neighborhood. As our elected officials, you should be up in arms over projecting or protecting our rural and beautiful area. Our kids were able to enjoy riding bikes outside, fishing in the canal across the street with their neighbors and friends. Now we have a grandson who lives with us, will not be able to do any of those activities without supervision, more supervision. And it's sad that you have the power, and you have the power to change that. Again, thank you for letting me speak, but I hope your ear, you hear the voices of the 11 families and join in on opposing this project from continuing on. We need this project to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I appreciate you commenting and speaking and communicating with what's going on over there. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
The next speaker is George Kales. Mr. Kales, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead, sir.
I had quite a bit to say, but this previous person, John, he, he said everything that he said is happening and has been happening next door to me for two years now. So I don't know if this ordinance falls into what's happening next door to me, but I wish you could hear this gentleman again. And perhaps, I don't know how to quite put it. I'm not as elegant as Mr. John, but listen to him again, and this is what's happening next door to me, and this is what's been happening next door to me for two years. Everything he said hits home. So that's my comment for now, and hopefully you can comment on this. Hopefully you can comment on the situation next door to me. Hopefully you can come down my driveway and take a look at what's going on. Hopefully you will listen to Mr. John once more. This is what's happening to me for two years. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
The next speaker is Eloy Roman. Mr. Roman, can you hear us?
Yes, I hear you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead, sir.
Great. Thank you all for allowing me to be here tonight with you. I want to reiterate what John said is 100% correct. I too live on 54th Street. Mind you, I've moved here about two and a half years ago seeking tranquility. And I can see that my future holds quite the opposite. Everything John said is 100% spot on. Actually, I think he underdid it. The traffic, our children, the road damage, our roads are not in perfect shape. All these trucks are just going to further damage the roads, the noise, the pesticides. Guys, I'm a physician. I'm tired of treating patients for cancer from the redlands, these pesticides, insecticides. This is no joke. I have a nine-year-old and an 11-year-old. Are you kidding me? I'm going to have to worry about this in front of my house, next to my house? The trucks, these trucks carrying P-Rocks laying all over the road, damaging our cars. Every single time these trucks go in and out, the amount of dust that they kick up, our pools, our house. I try to keep my house as beautiful as possible. Our property values. I mean, let's face it, who wants to buy a home when you have a nursery right next to your house with a business sign? A little while ago, we were talking about strangers, maltheft, you know, calls, you know, let somebody know if you see somebody that looks out of place. Are you kidding me? How can I do that with a business right next to my house? Rural. How does this help keep Southwest Ranches rural? This is a business. A little while ago, I heard a lot of, a lot of talking about, you know, these are residential streets. We should not have a business here. Well, I have one right next to my house. And the, and the final and most important point, everything that I just mentioned is happening and will get worse. This is a nuisance. This is a public dangerous nuisance, and I ask you all, you must have a nuisance clause or a law ordinance, because this is a nuisance. And I really, I really hope that something happens because I'm regretting moving to Southwest Ranches, especially if this is allowed to continue. Thank you all.
Thank you. Appreciate that comment.
Mayor, the, it looks like the last speaker is Christina Brownlow.
Hi, gentlemen. I want to, and I believe if I extend myself, I will not upset my neighbors, but I believe I can speak for Sunshine Ranches HOA in supporting our neighbors out in Rolling Oaks, John Bavaro and his neighbor. We have dealt with similar situations here in the ranches. We were also all very appalled when we knew there was an ordinance out there, and then we came to see this ordinance thrown right away and campaign signs put up on nurseries. So with whatever merit this has, we'd like to support our neighbors and their concerns, and we hope that you will listen and take these concerns to heart. We feel that we should all be committed together, not just as separate entities, but as a town as a whole, and support our children, our safety, our rural lifestyle, and the health and welfare of our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we hear that does it for public speaking?
Thank you. Yeah, this, I, you know, the residents said it a lot better than I can, but this is something that should never have happened. It should not be allowed. Generally, the best we can do is stop it in its tracks now and keep it from getting worse. But the issue was brought up, or the comment was brought up as being a nuisance, and we're definitely going to look into that as far as code violations. There's already been a series of code violations there. I'm not even open yet. It's already a series of code violations. So I appreciate the information that's been sent to me on that, and we'll take a look at that and anything and everything we can do to preserve the rural atmosphere out there in that community is what I think we're all, I know I'm committed to it. I believe this whole council is committed to it, so. But I appreciate, you know, I appreciate the residents taking the time to come out and express it personally, the importance of this. This is, this is really important. This is, this gets to the heart of who we are and what we need to be protecting. And, and to be honest with you, it, it really, it really makes me mad that this whole thing should never have even happened. And so let's take care of it. We'll step one now. Um, and so let's take care of it. We'll step one now and uh, let's keep moving down this path.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, um, I lived in Rolling Oaks also. Mr. Roman and Mr. Bavaro, um, what we've done, what we're gonna vote on tonight uh, is basically going to stop that in its tracks for the next six months. That's what we're voting on right now. Meanwhile, we, I'm just explaining the process to them. Um, when we've been trying on myself and Councilman Hartman, Vice Mayor Hartman, excuse me. Um, we were working with the comprehensive planning board for the landscape ordinance and retail nursery ordinance for years, as was the mayor. And uh, as was uh, Councilman Albretton, and I know uh, Councilman Kuzinski was heavily involved in it. We all, we all hear you loud and clear. Um, this is our first step to uh, getting that under control, um, where it's not going to uh, terrorize, wreck a neighborhood or anything like that, where I'm in full support of it. Wish we could have done it earlier. The political climate was not conducive to that. Uh, we're, we're moving the uh, the ordinance back into the comprehensive planning board. It's going to probably go through there very quickly and then come back uh, to the council. And but basically what we're doing tonight stops that in its tracks. And if I'm mistaken, if I'm incorrect here, uh, please correct me, but uh, that's really what we're doing. That's all. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Keith, can you clarify um, what impact this would have on this, on properties that are in the process of going through becoming retail?
Well, I, I, you know, when you say every case is going to stand on its own merits, if the town has already issued a certificate of use granting someone the ability to open, uh, they have gotten in under the wire uh, before this enactment and they are illegal. If the town has yet to uh, receive an application and, and approved an application uh, from someone trying to do this, they will be prohibited as a result of the zoning in progress from moving forward. The, the reason for a zoning in progress is always done in every municipality I've ever worked in uh, to prevent a slew of applications uh, by people when they know that the zoning code is about to be changed. So it immediately puts a halt. In fact, Russell's gonna have to advertise this after tonight. It immediately puts a halt on any new establishments uh, from submitting applications to the town. Uh, if they're in process, they're in process. There's nothing you can do. This prevents new ones.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor, a quick question. Keith, the landscape company in question, they've already pulled, I mean, they're already, so this wouldn't affect them?
I, I have no idea their status. I, I, this is the first time I've heard about this relating to that company. Maybe Andy knows that more than I do.
You're on mute, Andy.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. I, I just checked with Julio. Apparently their certificate of use has not been issued on that nursery property. So your actions tonight are very timely.
Very good. All right. Yeah, David.
Mr. Bavaro, Mr. Roman. During the campaign last year, I spoke at length about this. Um, and, and before this came upon you, this affected the property just to the east of Town Hall. And those neighbors came to me and were complaining, what can we do? What can we do? Because they had the same complaints, the gravel that's going into their pools, they're waking up every morning, dust all over their cars, the beep, beep, beep every morning. And I made that a point, that this is going to be important if I'm elected. And um, just to drive, drive the point home, if during September, October, early November, if you drove along Griffin Road, you saw what campaign signs were out there. And the residents spoke, the residents said, we don't want this. Now, um, setting this back to the, the comp plan board, if we can remove the unrelated items like horse trailers, I'm gonna vote yes for this. Um, because I believe in it. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Any other comments on this item? All right, Russell, if you could please uh, call the question.
Mayor? Uh, Councilmember Albretton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passive, Mayor.
Excellent. So um, I would just then encourage the council to, as requested, take a look at the, Andy, maybe, maybe what you could do is please, if just distribute out to the council the most current version of the ordinance as it was presented uh, um, last year and uh, and distribute that out to the council so that the council can take a look at it, highlight any areas in it that they have concerns about, any adjustments that they wanna, and, and I would encourage you, council, to um, to make the change that you need. You know, be, be, be very specific so that we can, we can get this uh, through the comp plan board as quickly as possible.
And that'll be at the next comp plan board. I, I believe that's been put on the agenda for the next one.
I have asked Jason to put that as an agenda item and he has agreed to do that. So, yep.
Excellent. So that doc, the previous version would be urgent at this point.
Correct.
It's next week.
All right, awesome. All right, um, Russell, item number 16. Well, actually, I, yeah, go ahead. So um, let me, let me introduce that one. That's really not, yeah. Um, so we, in the past, on every five or 10 years, we have done a charter review committee. And to look at the charter, which is basically the, kind of the constitution for our town, and to take a look at it and see if there is anything in it that we need to adjust, um, correct, improve, remove, um, to make it a better document that reflects the values and the direction that the town is going in. Um, we have made changes to the charter outside of a charter review committee. About uh, two years, two and a half years ago, we made some very significant changes to it. Um, and very positive changes to preserve our lifestyle, dealing with zoning changes and with the sale of public property to keep things from going commercial. But um, it's time for the charter review committee to kind of reconvene. And so we wanted to have this discussion item on the, uh, on the agenda to, for the council to discuss. Uh, there's, there's, there's some tradition on how we've done it in the past, but that's all it is, is just tradition. Um, certainly we can decide um, what we feel is best this go-round. I do think that it, it's, it's time for the charter committee to take a look at the charter again, get resident input and uh, see what if any changes need to be made. And if there's no changes need to be made, that's fine too. We don't need to make changes for changes sake, but it is time to take another look because it's been a while. So this item here, we wanted to have on the agenda so that we could discuss kind of the ground rules, how we wanted to see that happen. And um, so at this point, um, we'll just open it up to the council because I'd like to hear your thoughts and how this works. So uh, Bob, saw your hand up first, so I'll let you, go ahead.
Well, tradition. So 10 years ago, I was the chair of the charter review committee. And uh, each council member appointed a representative and it were, it was people like Vince Valetta, I believe Newell was on that. It, it was people that, that, you know, understood where the town, how, how the town has evolved, the charter we had at the time. And it was great. We worked with the clerk at the time, Deborah Dory, and um, it worked out well because obviously we were all having conversations with the council on ideas they had, we had. But at the end of the day, we came up with about five or six changes. I don't recall the exact numbers. It's a while ago. And of course, we recommend, so it went to the council. There were revisions made by the council um, after we were finished. And then just to, to let everybody know, the council doesn't make the final decision. They make the decision to put this on the next ballot. And then the whole town gets to vote. You can't change the charter without a townwide vote. So I would recommend to continue because the resident input on it was, was great. And we, we spent three or four months working on this. And uh, I, I'd like to see that approach continue because I don't know if I'd have the time. We were meeting one, two times a week towards the end, trying to get this thing wrapped up. But uh, I, I really believe the, the resident input is critical.
Thank you, Bob. Gary, I saw it. Yeah, right.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, you know, transparency is, is the greatest thing. This is our constitution. I've been the author or the co-author of five charter amendments that all successfully passed. Uh, they were all brought up as needed, you know, with no committees or form to, to uh, to put those forward. The charter is in pretty good shape with where we have it right now. Um, I'd, I'd really like to see, instead of a separate committee, we discuss the possibility of giving it to an existing committee. Um, one of the few recommendations that I would make as a, as a council member is that we move the uh, charter review to uh, to coincide with the census every 10 years instead of sort of maybe four years, maybe five years, maybe six years. You know, that we set a hard, a hard and fast date on it. Um, you know, we haven't reviewed it in a while. Um, we've, we've run through two election cycles with uh, not the past one, but the previous ones with charter amendments on it and they passed overwhelmingly. So I, you know, I'd like to see uh, possibly the comprehensive planning board or the drainage board possibly look at it as a, we can assign it to them as opposed to us running around. What I'm afraid of is that it's, it's another committee that now becomes a political football. And uh, I, I, we already have committees in place that are familiar with how we want to be in the town, how rural we want to be. And this is a matter of a review of a document and make recommendations. And there may be no recommendations to make. I mean, uh, so it, it, those are my thoughts on it. You know, like I said, there's only one thing I would really consider uh, at this point, and that is uh, every 10 years, looking at it, mandate it so that it coincides with the census. You know, as opposed to maybe this year, maybe not this year, you know, that sort of thing. And have uh, have it out, right out there in the public, full transparency, you know, on everything we do. So I, I, those are, those are my thoughts at this point regarding, regarding it.
Great, thank you.
I, I could support that, Gary.
Thank you, Bob.
David, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I, I was just um, just thinking that uh, maybe my, my opinion, I would be leaning toward each of us appointing somebody on, on a committee to review it. It's kind of where, where I would like to go with it. And um, that, that's basically the, my opinion on it.
Okay. Thank you, David.
I guess I'm last, Mr. Mayor, other than yourself. Uh, this is all brand new to me, but uh, I, I think the idea that Gary has is an excellent idea and obviously go along with it, that we have people here now. And I know it's an extra duty for them. I know it's going to be a lot more put on their shoulders, but we have some very competent people on these boards and I think they can help us a lot. So I think that that might be the best idea that Gary came up with. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I was, to be honest with you, I was leaning towards um, forming a separate board for it. Um, I think that's worked well in the past and um, but it makes sense. Uh, you know, I, I, I don't feel strongly about it. Um, and I think, I think it does make sense, Gary, the proposal you made. I, I, the, the, let me throw out one other thing. If we went that route, um, one of the things that comes to mind is I think the comp plan board would be the most appropriate board to, to look at this. And they've got a pretty full plate. So what I'm wondering is, would it be possible for that board? Let's see, is Jason on this call? Um, I'm wondering if the, if that board could meet twice a month, you know, basically every two weeks and alternate their work back and forth um, between their normal comp plan type duties and the charter review duties. I just, uh, I, I, I don't, I think it's critical. I think it's really important. I don't, I don't, I think there's very few things that any committee will work on uh, in the life of our town that's more important than adjustments to the charter. And so with the full plate that the comp board has, I'm just, I don't want it to be a secondary thought, I won't, you know, I, I, and I don't want to put the other work that the comp board has in front of them on hold. So that's, that's why I'm, I'm recommending that, or at least throwing that out there, see what the thought is.
Well, let me, let me ask you a question, Mayor. Um, can, can you hear me? Everybody just kind of.
What's, you know, your image is broken and it's hard to hear, but I can.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Um, hang on, let me turn something.
Probably having a network issue.
Well, Mayor, while, while Gary's working on coming back, uh, if there is support for that idea, I mean, I know Jason, Jason is on the meeting, but he's the chair of the board and certainly not the full board.
Right.
We can certainly reach out to the full board tomorrow and, and take their temperature on that, if there's support for that.
I mean, I'm going to recognize that's, you know, that's a volunteer board. They're already, like I said, they have a full plate. Um, and this is above and beyond the call of duty, so.
Jason's got his hand up. I don't know if you want to allow him to jump over just to make a comment?
Yeah, while we wait for Gary to get on here, that's good. Let's do that.
Did we lose Jason?
Did we lose him too?
Here he is.
Jason, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, yeah, I appreciate giving me just a couple of seconds, just to, just to speak on behalf of the comprehensive planning board. So, look, I, I, I think for myself, I, I think we're, I'm honored uh, to take on this task. Um, I, I don't want to speak on behalf of the board yet until we've had a chance to meet, uh, which will be next week. But uh, look, I, 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 I think it's a, uh, it's a privilege to, you know, again, to work on something like this. Uh, it kind of coincides with what we already do to some extent. And uh, you know, uh, at least from my perspective, I would be happy to take this on uh, as the chair, of course, but uh, want to, want to reflect, you know, or want to, uh, you know, defer to the consensus of the board. So um, I'm feeling very positive about it, but again, hopefully we, you can give us a couple of days to get you an answer on that. So thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Yeah, that's, that's, that's appropriate. Thank you.
And I believe Councilmember Jablonski's back.
Hey, hi.
There he is. All right, welcome back.
Lost everything here. Uh, where, where? Where, where, I'm sorry. I apologize.
So I was, I had put out the proposal of potentially doing it to the comp plan board, but having them meet twice a month. Kind of different agenda, alternate roles.
Well, let me ask you a question. Do they, why, why do we need to, in other words, on the charter review, what's the hurry? Is there, is there a pressing issue on the charter review?
Not that I'm aware of.
Something we could re, we could address in six months?
I, I don't see any reason why not.
Keith, is there any statute in place that requires us to do our review on some timely cycle?
Yeah, but you violated that four years ago.
Nothing like consistency.
Yes.
Just, just for our personal education, what, what is that?
I, I, I believe it's every four years, which is absurd.
That is absurd.
Yes. So, you know, which is something that the charter review committee should review and probably amend the charter. The, the, the other note, and, and I spoke to Councilmember Jablonsky about this previously, is at, at some point when the census results come in, it had been the, the past that you all had a committee for the districts as well. Although you don't have to, the council could, could certainly do it on its own. But if you wanted to create a new board to do redistricting and charter, that would fit the, the similar timeline, or you could keep it separate, just throwing it out there. If the goal was to reduce committees or not, I didn't really understand the goal.
Yeah, talk about a political football.
Yeah.
Is huge. So I think, I think that one, frankly, I think the districts are in better shape now than they've ever been. You know, if they need to be tweaked a little bit due to population changes, which should be very minor. You know, I think that can be handled administratively. I'm not, I'm not a fan for creating it. I think.
Yeah, we fixed that problem a while back.
Yeah.
You know, and, and same thing with the charter. We've gone through the charter numerous times. I was reading it the other night. You know, and like I said, I was going through it. I, I'm, I'm pretty well pleased with it, other than, you know, the requirement of meeting every so many years. I think that could be stretched out now. We're to that point now, or you know, it's a living document. So.
At that point as well, you know, and, and I just want to mention this because I, I think Vice Mayor mentioned it. You can always amend the charter even without a referendum. We've done it before in the town through a legislative act. So you actually could amend the charter anytime you wanted. If you wanted to fix that charter review provision, you know, and you didn't feel it was controversial, we could easily put it in the next legislative session just to fix that provision as well. So, so there are options there to, to fix that if you didn't want to do it via referendum. And also don't forget the council can always act as its own charter review committee. If you just wanted to do it for the sake of giving yourself additional time, you would just call one meeting of the committee and then suspend it, and then you're in full compliance with your charter. And then you can have another charter review committee anytime you want it.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, I would say, I, I would lean very strongly against doing a legislative change. I think it's critical that it goes in front of the voters. And we would fight really hard to keep that the way, that's the way we've always done it. Well, I guess from the, aside from the original, when it was legislative, but but I think that's, that's, I didn't even know that option was even available to us, but that's not one that.
And, and just to clarify, I wasn't telling you to.
I know it. I know it. I just, I just out of the box, I wanted to say that's not, that's not something I would support. I guess that's all I wanted to.
Yes, so two years ago, Broward County did their charter review, and I think they do it every 20 or 25 years. So it's not something that happens frequently at the county level.
But there is, you know, that is a, it is a good point that, so we would plan on, you know, if we look at this from a schedule standpoint, we would plan on this going before the voters in November of 2022. So the wording needs to be ready, I think, in around May or June, if I remember right, of 2022. So if this committee were to start, you know, if we were to give them six months, which I think is tons more time than they would need, I think it would be appropriate for them to start their work around September, October, somewhere in there.
Yeah, that's, that's basically assuming that there might be a, a change. There may not be a change. There may not be a change. It may just, there may be no recommendation.
Well, yes, yeah, I agree. I agree. But I also think part of the process is, is I'm like, we may see some things out of the survey, but part of the process is letting the town know that the committee is there. They're, they're discussing this. And kind of seeing if there's any ideas out there for potential changes for them to consider. So I think even if they're ended up with no changes, it still may be a two or three month process to get feedback, evaluate them and decide.
Oh, I, I, I agree. There's, you know, full transparency and all that, but we, we do have the luxury of time.
We do.
Right now. So, you know, and I think it's, it's something that needs to be done. I don't know if anybody's read the charter other than me here recently. And I'm, like I said, the only thing I would, I could support right off the bat would be the, the schedule change. You know, something like that. So anyway, I see Bob has his hand up.
Yeah.
Her mind.
Okay.
I saw, yeah, David.
Uh, conversation dovetailed a little bit earlier. And I heard the word redistricting. How does that work?
When we get the results from the census, which Andy could chime in, but I think it's still several months out. The, the town has to engage a consultant, which we normally engage a university. I think it's either FIU or FAU is the one who's been doing it for the town since its inception. They then have to do an analysis of whether or not the population has changed in locations throughout the town. Because by law, our voting districts have to be somewhat equal. It doesn't have to be perfect, but has to be somewhat equal. So upon reviewing the numbers, our consultant will either say, yeah, we're good, or, you know, you need to look at amending this district, at which time it would come before, back before the council to review and for your consideration and input.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may please, just, uh, to, to, to avoid the, the politics that could be very much involved in this, just want to, I guess, voice, voice my support for somebody independent of the town to be involved with this, not the town. That's kind of where I was leaning to go with this.
And by the way, Councilmember, it's never the town. It's always an independent university who does it.
All right.
Yeah, there's no one here who has expertise in reviewing that, that sort of data.
All right, yeah, Bob.
So I've been taking some of the League of Cities seminars over the last couple of months. And they just had one on redistricting. And the smartest thing in my opinion for us to do is to hire a professional that comes back to us with three or four options as far as maps, the justification and the reasoning why. And we look at that and, you know, we, we either adopt or we ask them for modifications based on our vision or, you know, our, our view of, of the current districts in the way they are. But I, I would, I, I wouldn't support, you know, us doing it. I wouldn't support, you know, a, a committee to do that. I really want to leave this, it's software now to do this. You know, we, we don't have to sit down with maps and papers and, and numbers of people, the software that they use. And they can come up with options quickly and they can revise the options quickly as well. I just wanted to throw that out.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are we talking about two different things right now?
We are.
We need to back on the charter.
No, no, it's fine. It's fine. I, 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 I agree with the, the whole redistricting. We don't, I don't think we need a committee for that. I think we just need an expert at it. Who does it for a living and then comes back and tells us what he thinks, you know, we need to do. We either say yes or no. You know, it's pretty simple. And, uh, but, and anyway, going back to the charter review. You know, I just think it's something we got the luxury of time. And I think we have able committees that can look at it now. You know, the, the way we do it now, I don't think we need to appoint a special committee, you know, for that. I don't think, I, I don't see the need for that. That's my opinion.
Okay. Thank you. Andy, did you want to add something?
I, I, I just want to close the circle on the redistricting if I could. Based on individual conversations I've had with all of you, we've already reached out to that consultant and, and have somebody teed up who's done it in the town previously. So they're all teed up and, and ready to go. I certainly wasn't ready to have that conversation this evening. But we have them lined up and ready to go once we receive the census data. Originally, the, the redistricting data was, do I believe at the end of September? I'm, I'm sorry, at the end of March, but I, I don't believe we expect it now until September. Census Bureau is running behind on that. So we're not, that's not imminent. Obviously, we need it in time for next year's elections potentially. But it's not imminent and, and we can't do anything until we already, until we have that census data. Tonight, I just was hoping to focus on the, the charter, but I did want to, since the conversation came up, I, I did want to circle back just to close that up. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'd like to open this up to the public, see if there's any, any comment from the public.
Okay, Mayor, it looks like we have a couple of people. Let's see, the first one is Jennifer Dactin. Dactin, can you hear us?
Yep. Are you there?
Well, you can hear us.
Um, I was just curious on how we could get on some of these boards. I've been on a board before, but we were, you know, I approached people and asked to get on the board. Um, I kind of feel like a lot of these boards have the same group of people on them over and over and over again. And there's not a lot of outside people on them. Um, so it would be interesting to figure out how we could get new people on these boards and new eyeballs and new ideas and uh, new outside looks.
Yep. Yep. Good point. We did, we did try and work more this last time, getting some, some new individuals on there. And I think we were pretty successful at that. But it's a good point. We always, we, we definitely need to bring in new ideas and new thoughts. So I, you know, the, the, the process is filling out an application, sending it to town hall. And, and then when an opening is there, we look at those folks that have volunteered to participate.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, the next speaker is George Morris.
Yes, good evening again, George Morris. I'm the chair of the Drainage Board. I'm also the vice chair of the Comp Board. And I think, you know, I'd love to tackle this project. I think if you added it to any one of our boards, it would overwhelm us. I think I agree with Steve. But I would be in favor of forming another board, potentially maybe using the, the, the current board members or giving, you know, another slot in the month for us to discuss this because it would take our time and consideration. Um, I think we do have a full agenda. I mean, our, our last meeting at the Drainage Board was nearly two, was two hours, basically, and the same thing for the Comp Board. So we are running a full agenda. But I would love to tackle it, uh, you know, that board and potentially be on it. Um, and with regards to what Jennifer said earlier about having new people, um, I think we tackled that issue as well. I mean, we expanded some of our boards to include new people. But a lot of our boards are very technical and a lot of it has to do with experience in town and knowledge of previous meetings and codes and et cetera. But I'm not against having new people. It's just something to think about. It's not a brownie point to be put on one of these boards. It's, it's really takes an intense amount of knowledge and previous history. And there, there are people that are on the board that do have that history, New Hollinsworth, et cetera, and other people. But anyhow, that would be my suggestion is basically to maybe form another slot during the month to have that and not overwhelm the drainage or comp board. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no other speakers, Mayor.
All right. Yeah, Bob.
Just a quick comment out to Jennifer. So Jennifer, all of our, all of our boards are open to the public. And what I've seen people do over the years, and I did it as well, is I went to the Drainage Committee before I was on it. I wanted to know what it's about. And I learned a lot from, I think Gary was the chair back then. But, you know, I would encourage you, we, we allow public participation in the meetings. I mean, you can contribute, you just can't vote. That's the only difference. So if you're interested in a board or try them all out, see which one interests you and, and start going. And then next year, when it's time to make the appointments, um, you know, you'll have every opportunity. And that really, that's for everybody. But I just wanted to address Jennifer's comment.
Yeah, let me, let me add to that if I can, Bob. When we talked about it a couple of months ago, we, we came up with a, like, I guess, an ad hoc policy at this point, where any, any resident that attends six meetings in a row, we would vote them in on the board at large.
Yep.
You know, you, you, you know, we just got to show up, you know, and participate. You know, that's, that's the key feature to all these boards, you know, unlike the other, the other month ago, we, we didn't have enough people to convene the Parks Board. You know, all of you were there. The, the council outnumbered the, the, uh, the committee. You know, which was kind of a shock to me. But anyway, that's, you know, water under the bridge right now. So, you know, I encourage everybody to come to the boards. They're, they're very easy to come to now with, with Zoom. You don't have to leave your house. You know, and, and participate, even if you do nothing more than just hear the items that are going on. And, you know, it's an educational experience, you know, for, for everybody. And I, and I'm speaking in generality there, to the entire town. So. That's all.
Yeah, great. Thank you. So I think we do have a consensus on how to move forward with this, that it would be something, and I'm, I'm stating this so that the council can disagree with me. I'm not, I'm not dictating. I'm just throwing it out there so that, you know, we can kind of come to a conclusion. If I misunderstood something, please, please jump in there and correct me. But my understanding, the consensus is that we would look to convene this effort in the fall, probably, I would say, September, September-ish. And that we would use probably the comp board, but potentially the Drainage Board to do it. And depending on their workload at that time, we would either put their current workload on hold and have them switch over to this or ask them to kind of double up for a few months to handle these separately. Is that, did I hear that right? And we good with that?
I think so.
Okay. So I think that's our consensus on that. Before we leave that topic, I, I have to take a little personal liberty here because Councilmember Jablonski reminded me of something, and I need to do a shout out to Vince Faletta. When I first read, when I first ran for office back in 2002, I put my name in there and very few people knew who I was at the time. And, but of course Vince Faletta knew who I was. And so I was at Publix doing my shopping where most political activity takes place in our town. And I ran into Vince and he looked at me, he says, hey, you're that guy that's running against Forrest for the seat. And I said, that's right. And he goes, I've only got one question for you. And I said, what was that? He says, have you read the charter yet? You know what? I hadn't read the charter yet. So I said to him, you know what? Point taken. You're exactly right. That was a Sunday around noon. By four o'clock in the afternoon, I had read the charter over a couple of times. So it, it's a critical document. Shout out to Vince for, you know, him always being right on target to ask the right question and get to the heart of the matter. So. All right. Next item is the Founder's Park mural.
I think we already went, yeah. Get to Andy's, Andy's going to work with you.
Yeah, I think, I think Councilmember Kazinsky spoke to this earlier. And that really, the only information that I would have had was what he had already shared with you.
Okay.
Yeah, Councilmember comments.
Are we good? Good, David?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Item number 17, 18, actually.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. There any updates to the minutes? Correction, seeing none. Okay, Russell, if you could please call the question.
You're muted.
You're muted.
My apologies. Councilmember Albretton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
And Mayor Rikers?
Yes.
Motion to.
Gary, can you help us out here?
Motion to, motion to adjourn.
Good night, folks.